2021 Planning Board Meeting to Order.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay.
Where'd that come from?
I don't know.
That's the first time we saw that.
I've never seen anything like that come up. Do I hit Continue, or who gets Continue, or what?
Justin needs to do that.
Hit Continue on your screen.
Okay. All right, so it's been called to order. Paul, would you do your thing? Read the instructions.
Well, that is blotting out, that meeting recording is blotting out Bob.
It is? Oh.
Yeah, my screen it is.
Just hit Continue and it should go away.
Right.
Everybody has to hit Continue, or who does the hit Continue?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Oh.
It's for you to acknowledge the fact that you're being.
Oh, I got it. My Bobby came back.
Okay.
And Pam is in the house.
Pam is in the house.
I don't see Pam yet. But go ahead, Paul. Let's do this.
In accordance with the Governor's order supersending certain provisions of the open meeting law, to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the June 8th, 2021 public meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed through the Planning Board, utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Instructions and the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address. Please allow 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, or maybe less, if you have previously used Zoom on the device you will use to access this meeting. Three, additional public comments may be sent in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may also be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will be made a part of the meeting record and may be read into the record, summarized, or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the Chair. Four, applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thank you, Paul. And now we have the minutes of May 11th, 2021. Paul?
I've not seen them, so I defer to next week.
Okay, so we want to put it off till the next meeting. Okay. So, first then on our agenda is public discussion, mixed residential and commercial overlay district. And as you could see, Tom sent through to us the version that Laura had put through with all the comments, and then we got the version that the three-member committee had put together, mostly Laura's comments on it. And I'm hoping you all have had an ample amount of time to look at it and make comments, if you have any. Has anybody not had time?
We've had plenty of time.
I know, you guys have. All right. I have one comment to make. I think it is a done deal. It's beautiful. But I do have one comment, and I've got to find my comment here. Okay. It's under the Development Requirements, and it's C. I've had trouble with the 2.75 stories. Laura said nowhere is 2.75 stories defined. But this is a special thing that we're doing here. So I ran this by Jim earlier today, and I thought, you know, if we could say maximum building height shall be 35 feet, and how did I put it, and accommodate various styles of
Roof lines.
Roof lines, thank you, such as gambrel. To give an example on that, so that, I mean theoretically, it could be 35 feet high and flat-roofed. Ugly, but there are various types of roof lines that we can see in town. You can have just a pitched roof, you can have gables. And if we give an example such as gambrel, we don't have very many of those. And that allows for some additional floor space, and I think there was some questioning on that. I don't know how the rest of you feel on that. Charlotte? Charlotte?
I don't feel very good.
I'm sorry you broke up, Charlotte. I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I don't feel very good about that change. I don't know why we need a definition of 2.75. We've never defined 2.5, and it appears in other places in our bylaws.
Okay, Tom?
Well, actually, I think probably the easiest thing to do would be to add a definition for a 3/4 story. In our current zoning bylaw in 213, we do have a definition of half-story. And it basically says, as you might suspect, which is the number of square feet in area is never more than half of the story below. The square footage of the subject portion is greater, that portion would be deemed a story. So where we have a definition for a half-story, we could easily make a definition for 3/4 of a story and basically use that exact same definition, but just change the fraction to 3 over 4.
And that would do it, too. Laura said we don't have a definition for the 2.75, so that's an easy fix also.
Well, Pat, I don't think there's a difference between 3/4 and 2.75.
There isn't. But because half-story has a definition.
I just want you to know, I've had this enforced by our building commissioner before, when I've asked to renovate a building on the second floor, on the third floor, and he said, no, you can't, it has to be exactly 50% of what's on the floor below. And that's why we pushed for 3/4.
Then it needs a definition, because the half has a definition. Charlotte?
Then let's use the suggestion that Tom made, where it's the longer definition, and it simply substitutes 3/4 and does that in the same language, different numbers, so that it's clear that they are they are meant to be read together, and they are the same, and they are very clear.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
The third floor can only be 75% of the floor below it.
Right.
And that's what Tom's saying.
Right.
So I think that's good.
That's fine, but we do need to define it, because we don't have that anywhere in our bylaws. And as soon as we leave something undefined, somebody's going to find some way to go around it. Okay? Is everybody on board with putting a definition in? Pam?
Yeah. No, I am. I just had one other comment.
Okay, Pam?
So, under D, same development requirements, I've never heard of the word "another", but I would be willing to change it to "on another".
Where is that, Pam?
So, under D, right, under Development Requirements, under D, it says, "Development must provide a minimum of one parking place per space, per dwelling, until, or unit, rather, on the property, or" there is no "on another", but we could say "on another property", which is what I think it was meant to say. See where I am? Yes, that is what it's meant to say.
Okay.
Although I sort of like "on another". We could create a new word. Property on "no other". Okay?
So, okay, "another".
On another property.
Okay, great. And then formatting, under Affordability Requirements, somehow D is left blank in there. That should be E. So in other words, we end up with F instead of G. That's just typo.
Right.
So with those changes, is everybody good to go with this, and we can start having hearings on it? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. No opposition to that. Thank you, all of you. That was great. Next.
All I can say is, good things come to those who wait, because this document is terrific.
It's terrific, and it's had an awful lot of work. And I thank the three of you in particular, but others who have contributed greatly to it. Thank you. We have Planning Board Discussion. And I, Tom, I'm assuming, because that other was public discussion, that there's no one there in the audience that's waving frantically and wants to say something. Is that correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. So we move on to Planning Board Discussion. Davis Straits Working Group recommend Planning Board members and Development Community member. And I would like to say, I want to put my oar in the water on this one, that I would very much appreciate being appointed as one of the Planning Board members to that working group. It kind of came from my brain out of my mouth when we had the joint meeting with the selectmen and caught Tom by surprise. I hadn't thought about it, but they're going to have to get very much on board with what we're doing. And it also comes out of the local comprehensive plan. So I'd like to be able to continue my interest in working knowledge and what went on, to be able to transmit it in the working group and to work with Union Studios. And I don't know how the rest of you feel on that. So, we're deciding tonight who will be our Planning Board members. Charlotte?
I'd be happy to have you on, Pat. I think that that's really appropriate. But I'd also like to recommend Jim Fox to be on it, because he really has been on top of it from the beginning, and is most knowledgeable about the properties involved. And I think that he'd be a very good representative on that committee.
Well, he, like I, was on the local comprehensive plan where this whole thing evolved. He and Bob and I were on it. So I'm fine with that. How about the rest of you all? Paul?
I'd like to propose that Patrick Foot and Jim Fox be the representatives of the Planning Board on the Davis Straits Joint Working Group.
Okay, John, did you have something?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, because even though Paul didn't move it, he used words to that effect, John seconded. So may I please see a show of hands that agrees with that format? Thank you. We're all in favor of that. And then Tom, as he indicated in his Friday memo to us, he'd been asking other people who could provide the community, and hopefully some professional input to this working group, too. And Tom, would you please carry forth with that?
If I may, just for our listening audience, so what you received was a draft memo about a working group that I was sharing with Frank. The format's changed a little bit, that it won't be a working group, it will be a committee, so it'll be posted with minutes, and rather than as a working group, which is a bit more informal. But to that effect, the mechanism, the goal is the same. And those goals, as proposed previously and reviewed with numerous parties, including our consultants, are to advance the goals of the Davis Straits Project, to facilitate communications among Select Board, Planning Board, their staffs, and the consultant, Union Studio, and Horsey-Witten, be a point of contact and obtain timely answers to questions posed by the above parties, to suggest actions to best facilitate meetings of the goals of the project, and keep accurate notes on proceedings that may be readily referred to by above parties and the public where appropriate. Membership had been proposed as two Select Board members, two Planning Board members, a member from the Development Community, our Form-based code consultants, Union Studio, and Horsey-Witten Group, Town Planner and Assistant Town Planner in the Committee with Sunset, two years from the initiation, but maybe renewed if work is still incomplete. As I said in my draft memo, we've shared the ideas with our consultants, who've endorsed the utility of such a group. We've also discussed with Town Council the mechanism for creating such, as I just talked about. I recently reached out to Falmouth resident Tony Green about his participation in the group. You may be familiar with the Pine Hills in Plymouth. It's an award-winning mixed-use development that Mr. Green's company developed and continues to build. He would, in my opinion, be a stellar addition to the group. Tony is a Falmouth resident, third-generation Massachusetts builder with master's degree in land planning from Harvard, and a former principal of the award-winning Green Company. He's on the board of the Harvard Real Estate Academic Institute, past chairman of the National Neighborhood Development Council at ULI, and a former executive committee member at the National Association of Home Builders. He's lectured at MIT, Harvard, Duke, Tufts, and EPA. He recently served on the State Committee addressing forest conservation within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I believe, as I said, that he is a great get. And he's willing to do the work. I've known him for 20 some-odd years since I was on the town meeting in Plymouth. If you've been to the Pine Hills, you've seen what a fabulous product they do. One of the things that really struck me when I first met with Tony, when I was a town meeting member talking about the project and went on a site visit, he told me, he goes, "In the Pine Hills, we have 180,000 lineal feet of view." 180,000 lineal feet of view. That's, are we looking at a golf course, are we looking at the bay, are we looking at the hills? But to know your site to the point where you know what people are looking out their window, and one structure's not going to get in the way of the other, that is just a stat that just stuck with me forever, and that's what you want to do when you're looking at a piece of property, understanding what it is. You really want to be in the weeds. So I had talked to Tony, he was willing to do it. I talked to a couple other people who'd been suggested, just to make sure that I wasn't hurting anybody's feelings by not, you know, talking to them, Christian Valli being one of them. He was very gracious, says he would be happy to do it if we needed him, but I said, I think, you know, we've got a pretty good candidate who's willing to do it, so we still have to sort of form out the mechanism to create this committee, but if the board thinks that's a good idea, that's great. If you've got other suggestions as well, we can put them in the hopper as well.
Are there any other suggestions from board members? Paul?
Yeah, I have two comments, if I may. One is, this Davis Straits Committee, assuming that's a standing committee with the rules of open meeting law and minutes and so forth, will they be provided with a recording secretary as well?
That will likely be a staff person who will do that.
Okay, secondly, this Mr. Green does, if he participates in this, would his company be precluded from participating in development of this project if it come to that?
No, they wouldn't, because they would just be consulting on the bylaw. They would not be, they're not voting on the bylaw, they're not paying for the bylaw. He's just one person sitting at the table. When we did 40R in Kingston, one of the people who was at the table was the developer, the actual developer of the development by the train station. This was a 720-unit, 250,000-square-foot development. The thing that brings more certainty to your zoning is you have someone from the Development Community who is engaged in in development and understands, you know, how these things work. So, on opinion of council, and I will check with them once again, but I do not believe that they would be prohibited, or that he would even have an interest, frankly, in doing that, but I'm sure that's probably something that Tony would like to know as well.
John?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Tom that Tony has a tremendous talent, and if he's on this committee, be a real bonus for the town of Falmouth. However, how do we find out if there are other local developers that would have some interest that we could interview? How do we put that out, or have you already done that, and you've had no replies?
Well, like I said, a few people were suggested. We had Mr. Lingefalter, who sent us a very nice set of comments about the development that he thought would be helpful to the board. He didn't necessarily express an interest in serving on a board or committee, but it's been a pretty short list to talk to folks.
Charlotte? John, go ahead, continue.
Do we have our next meeting next week, or two weeks from next week?
Two weeks, John.
Meeting on June 22nd.
So can we just put this off for two weeks and see if anybody else applies from the town of Falmouth?
Sounds like a great idea.
Be interviewed. I'm not trying to delay anything, obviously, but I know you talked to Christian, but did you speak with his dad? His dad has tremendous amount of experience and was a vice president for the Green Company for a long time.
Yeah, I have not.
I'm just throwing that out there, but I think if we just wait two weeks, maybe we'll get some other applicants, maybe not, and I doubt that you'll get anyone more experienced than Tony, but I'd like to just give other people an opportunity.
Thank you, John. That's a wonderful suggestion. And Charlotte, you had something?
I'm assuming that the change from working group to committee that's functioning under the the open meeting laws, that they can call people in, other people can come and give input as part of the process. So in a way, it's not excluding anyone, it's just ensuring that a very knowledgeable person is going to be with it from start to finish.
You don't have any objection to leaving it open?
Pat, can you see me raising my hand?
Oh, no, I didn't, John. I'm sorry. Jim, I'm sorry. Charlotte, you do not have any objection, I assume, to just leaving it open for another two weeks? Until our next meeting, not making any decisions tonight. Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I guess two weeks doesn't matter, but I can tell you, in this environment we're in, to get a developer that's willing to volunteer his time, we should jump all over it fast. I can't get an engineer to commit to do anything for six weeks, or developers, or even look at anything. If this guy's ready to go, we could always bring in people as invited guests to talk. We need to get this thing moving fast, and I'm ready to do it right away. And that's all my point, because there's, it's really hard to even get anyone to focus on anything in this environment. It's just so crazy out there.
Do you disagree that we can leave it open until our next meeting and take a vote then?
A little bit, but I don't want to argue with anybody. I think we should go as fast as we can, and that's always my opinion, but that's just the way I am.
Tom, is Tony expecting something from tonight?
No, when he talked, he basically said, "I'd be happy to do it", and I said, "Well, let me just send you the stuff so you understand what we're looking forward to", and he looked at it and said he'd be happy to do it. I don't think these, you know, I don't know what his dance card is like, but I don't think he's going to take umbrage that we didn't snap him up as the first round draft pick, or anything like that. I think we'll be fine to take John's suggestion. Put it out there and see if we've got anybody else who's interested in the seat.
Well, I'm inclined to go with him because of his qualifications. Bob?
Yeah, I say we grab him now, and then if there's anybody else that comes along, still advertise it. And if somebody else comes along, is there a limit to the number of people that can be on this group?
There's not, but the larger the group that you get, particularly if it's a working group, a quorum's not an issue.
Yeah, I understand that.
If it's a committee, the quorum is an issue. So if you get too many people, and you try to get together, and somebody's busy, then you don't have enough people to meet and have a quorum. So I'm always just trying to make sure we've got, you know, a workable group.
The other thing, you always have to have an odd number, if it's like that.
Yeah.
And so we wouldn't just be adding one more, we'd have to be adding two more to get that odd number again.
And most of the time, these things don't come down to a split vote. Usually, things are pretty much by acclamation. But I think that two weeks is a great idea to make sure that, you know, we didn't leave any stones unturned out there.
Okay. And Jim, in answer to your question, the problem is that you're less than half the screen, so when you raise your hand, it's like that. Can you see me?
I have to do this?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Now I can see you when you do that. So really, there are times when I don't see your hand, because it's just not up high enough. Okay, Tom, do you have an update on the Davis Straits working? Oh, Paul?
Tom, how many members are on this committee? Because I see the consultants, they're not really members. They're just participants, are they not?
No, they're proposed to be member.
Yeah, we've got five people. Essentially, those are, you know, the staff, the hired hands, they're more ex officio members. If you're, like I said, if we're putting together a working group, just informal like that, but putting together a committee, we would create those ex officio members who would not be voting on things and not be required for the quorum.
That applies to the assistant town planner?
Correct. I don't vote, as you know, except.
They're five members of this committee.
Except in local elections in Plymouth and national elections, I don't vote.
Yep. There are five voting members of this committee. And Tom, do you have any update on the Davis Straits work?
I do not. We are working to put together the focus groups we had talked about before. And hopefully, we'll have some progress done on that here in the next week or so. It's just been busy trying to get things done.
Okay. So we'll keep it on the agenda for the next time, so that it's there. It's a marker, in case there's something to report.
I once knew a guy who said he wanted to talk about Davis Straits at every meeting.
Nothing to talk about, nothing to talk about. Okay.
We did have it on the agenda every week.
Well, we did. Okay. If you've read again, excuse me, Tom's note to us, the zoning board administrator has requested that Tom be at their meeting when they're talking about Lewis Neck Road, and requested that a member of the Planning Board also be there to represent the Planning Board. Tom reached out to Bob, and Bob was agreeable to be the representative from the Planning Board, and I'm assuming, Bob, that you haven't changed your mind yet on that.
No, I'm still on board.
Okay. But instead of his just having to go there and say, "Well, hey, I'm a citizen and I'm speaking as a citizen", if we authorize by a vote for Bob to represent us, then he can speak for the Planning Board. So if you're so inclined, there is a motion that Tom put in there to authorize Bob Leary. And I would like somebody to make that motion, please.
So moved.
Okay, so it reads, "To authorize Bob Leary to address the Falmouth ZBA regarding Falmouth Housing Trust, Lewis Neck Road 40B." So Pam has moved it, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. John, you have a comment?
Yeah, I do have a question. I don't think I've ever seen this done before. So are we going to do this in the future? Every time we have a referral to the ZBA, we're going to have a representative?
I can't answer that, but I assume not.
Is this a special case, or is this a precedent? I don't quite understand what we're doing here.
Tom, will you speak to that, please?
Yes, it is, it's not really a special case, but there has been such a lengthy history of Lewis Neck Road and the Planning Board, and there've been so many layers for that. There's been a lot of discussion about the Planning Board's intent at the previous hearing, and it just seemed to be the clearest thing to do, rather than have someone come and say, as Pat pointed out, "I'm Bob from the Planning Board, but not as a citizen", just for that clarity, just to provide some background as to the Planning Board's work to get to where we're at on Lewis Neck Road.
This is in support or explanation of our referral to the Zoning Board of Appeals 40B application?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so it has been moved. And Paul?
Is this the meeting next Thursday, this week?
I do not know. When is it, Tom?
June 10th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is this Thursday. It's been moved and seconded that Bob represent the Planning Board at the ZBA meeting for Lewis Neck Road 40B. Please show your hand if you're in support of this. Okay, all seven of us are in support of that. Thank you. Next on the agenda, committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
The Transportation Management Committee made a presentation last night to Select Board on downtown parking, and there were a number of comments from the Select Board. And there were a number of comments from the uh, select board uh, addressing the short-term recommendations. And then uh, in two weeks, the uh, Transportation Management Committee is again making a presentation on the annual report to the select board. And then coupled with that, the uh, Postal Residency Action Committee is preparing a presentation with the select board uh, in two weeks on the, and on the report that's being prepared for the uh, for the town. So there's five points coming up on the select board meetings next couple of weeks. So if you're interested in moving to attend those meetings.
Thank you, Paul. Um, and maybe because they're coming up, maybe the planning staff can send out a reminder because these are kind of important for the planning board to know about. Um, because I know I'm not taking notes on that. John?
Yes, I, I just wanted to mention that I asked Melinda to send, to send everyone the um, uh, CPC recommendations for the town meeting in June. And I didn't know if anyone had any questions of, about what's being proposed.
Does anybody have any questions on that?
The one thing I wanted to mention, do you have a question, Pam? Okay, one thing I wanted to mention was that um, uh, CPC accumulated enough money uh, to pay off the, the town's debt for the open space last year. So that freed up about a million and a half dollars in future revenue uh, for CPC to divide up against, between the three categories. So this year they voted to put an awful lot of money into affordable housing. That's not to say it'll happen every year, but the money's going to be available every year.
Great.
Great. Okay.
Any other reports? Charlotte?
Uh, could you, could you just for a minute speak a little bit longer on that money? Uh, it's one point eight, a little over one point eight million. And how much affordable housing do you think that, that will build?
Well, I'm, I'm on the subcommittee Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund that uh, we, we take applications uh, for uh, to divide up that capital. And we have been working under a sixty-five thousand dollar per unit uh, that, that we have subsidized for affordable housing. At our last meeting, we raised that to a hundred thousand dollars per unit. And uh, we're waiting to get that approved by CPC. And um, so we've been running sixty-five thousand dollars a unit. So divide a million eight by sixty-five thousand. Is that thirty units maybe? Sounds like a lot of money, but it's not a lot of units. And, and of course, it doesn't pay for the whole unit. It just helps support whoever the applicant is.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so now we move on to reorganize, reorganization of the planning board. And the first is for the chairman, and I would like to nominate Charlotte for the chairman.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for Charlotte for the chairman. Is there any discussion and are there, are first, are there any other nominations? Bob?
I'd like to nominate Jim.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll, I'll second if, so we can vote on it.
Okay, so we've got, we've got Charlotte and we've got Jim nominated for chairman of the planning board for next year. Yep, anybody else?
Pam?
Okay, uh, let's take a vote on this. Uh, first, Charlotte, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, one, two, three, four, five. Well, that does it. I can say all in favor of Jim, raise your hand.
Thank you.
So it's five to two. So Charlotte is our next chairman for next year.
Congratulations, Charlotte. We couldn't have an uncontested race.
No. And I know she's going to be exceptionally fine chairman. She's very articulate and knows a lot of this stuff. She's been on the board long enough. So congratulations, Charlotte. Um, now nominations for vice chairman, please. Charlotte?
I'd like to nominate Jim.
Is there a second? Okay. Been moved and seconded that uh, Jim becomes vice chairman. Anybody else? Well, it looks, it looks like it's going to be acclamation. Raise your hand, please, in support. Seven out of seven. Okay. So Jim is vice chairman. And clerk?
I nominate Paul.
Second.
Anybody else? Okay, please raise your hand if you're supporting Paul for this position. Okay, thank you very much. And then we normally all, we normally also um, consider committee members. I have not heard from anybody who wants to not be the planning board representative from any of the committees that they're serving as a representative on. Is that correct? Is, I should put it, does anybody want to get off of the committee that they're representing the command, uh, the planning board on? So may I please have a motion that the membership um, that the planning board representatives to committees will remain the same as they currently are?
I move that all of planning board appointees to the various subcommittees uh, remain as is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please. Jim?
No, I'm second.
Oh, all right. Okay, please raise your hand if you agree with this. So it's seven. Charlotte, raise your hand. Okay, it's seven out of seven that everybody will stay the same on their committee representation. Thank you all. And I really want to thank you for letting me serve as your chairman for the last two years. As you know, it's been difficult during the COVID uh, period in particular, because I'm not particularly technologically adept. So it has been difficult. Um, during
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Pat, for all the work you've done.
Thank you, Pat.
Welcome. You're very welcome. Jim?
Yeah, Pat, I would just like to recognize you for how many years you've served both on this board and as chairman and a chairman of various committees. I, I don't even think I can add them up. But it is that many. I know uh, it's a lot. And having served in the board as chairman, it's a job. It's a real job and, and a local comprehensive plan and all the other things you've worked on with this, your, our town's blessed to have you.
Thank you.
For us. Thank you.
I'm not disappearing. I'm just not chairman anymore.
No, I know, but Pat, how many, well, you've been on the board more, two or three more years than me, and I can't even count the years I've been on it, so.
I'm in my twenty-first year.
You're probably three or four more years than me.
So. So I, I guess you could call me the institutional knowledge of it, but that sounds so ancient.
Well, I'm glad that Charlotte's stepping up and uh, ready to start taking on some of the uh, the heat, because you and I have gone back and forth for the last
Long time already.
Long time being chairman.
At least a hundred years.
Charlotte, it is a job and you don't get paid for it.
Yeah.
I, I know both of those facts. I'm looking forward to it, but I really am very glad of two things, having such good role models. Pat, you've been terrific. Knowing that you're, you're all here. Everybody helps. I'm expecting that and I hope that's the way it will go.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always been that way and it's a blessing. Um, we move on to announcements. Are there any announcements tonight?
Um, I'd like to make an announcement, actually. Um, I just wanted to let everyone on the board know that um, I am actually pregnant with baby number two.
Wow.
Wow, when do you do?
Um, October eighth.
Oh.
Is the due date. And uh, we decided that we wanted to find out the gender on this one. It was a surprise with my son and we found out we're having a little girl.
Oh my.
Oh, perfect.
That is perfect. Congratulations, Makayla.
Thank you. We're, we're very excited and she's been good to me so far. I'm halfway there and everything's been going smooth. So no complaints so far.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for telling us.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Very exciting.
We'll, we'll look for updates along the way. Um, do we have any general correspondence? When I checked with Tom earlier, we did not have any.
Uh, I, I have to say that uh, oftentimes the correspondence that uh, that the board gets are things that we email during the course of uh, the, the, the meeting of the weeks. We'll do our very best to pu- put those into a binder, uh, since we will have binders on the twenty-fourth and do our best to corral them in, in one spot for you. Uh, it's, hasn't been one of my better events, uh, wrangling correspondence together for you guys uh, in, in one, one spot.
Jim?
I, I believe we are going back to o- public meetings next time. Is that correct?
Uh, June twenty-second, we are posted for uh, the selectman's uh, board meeting.
Can't wait.
I know. Oh.
It's gonna be great.
Are there future agenda items? Oh, Paul?
Yeah, I'd appreciate it, Tom, if you gave us an update on the hiring of the assistant town planner. We talked briefly about it, but can you provide public input on that?
Yes, uh, we, we, we're, we likely are going to hire one. Um, we had a uh, 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 another round of interviews. Uh, we had
He froze.
Yeah, Tom, he froze up.
Right when he was getting to the good part.
Yeah.
I guess you can't talk about it. Sorry, I didn't mean to pry.
Well, I guess he can catch up when he gets unfrozen. Um, are there future agenda items that anybody wants to see?
Davis Straits?
Well, yes, we already said it's going to be on there, Jim. Okay, anything else?
I think we should have, we should have dates for the public hearings.
Um, if they've been set up yet.
Well, let's have an update on that so that we can get going with them.
Okay, so public hearing updates. And Makayla, I'm assuming you're taking notes on this since Tom is Okay, Jim?
I, I just wanted to mention that FCTV is ready to do another video for the zoning change, which I think we should try to put together as we did with the local, with uh, the accessory department. That was a very successful undertaking, being able to film it and direct it to every single town meeting member outside of uh, political influence and just say, hey, look at this. So I, they have contacted me. I will be putting together a group of three to talk about it. And uh, obviously Charlotte and I, I would think Charlotte and John. I mean, Pat, you could be too, but
No, I think you guys have worked on it. You're most knowledgeable.
Suggest that uh, be Charlotte and John and myself. And uh, we see what happens and hopefully it'll become as good a tool as we had a few years ago.
Yep, I hope so. Well, because they keep re-showing it too.
Right.
Okay. Do you want to take a chance on Tom's update? Oh, Paul?
Are we still on announcements?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I don't think we've had a meeting since the passing of Virginia Vaila. Um, she was a wonderful person. I worked with her on a couple of committees. She passed away about two weeks ago. And a lot of information in the press about what impact she had on the town. She was a very remarkable woman, very diplomatic and very graceful. And I think it's a big loss to the town that she has passed. She's worked for fifty years, working for the good of this town.
I will second that, Paul. I got into the whole political arena by working on her first campaign uh, for selectmen. So, you know, in a sense, she got me into this whole arena too. Um, and I know Bill and I, whenever we had questions on water or sewage or anything like that, we would instantly reach out to Virginia. A huge loss to the town. So.
One other thing, I got an interesting email from Tom Cahira, who's the head of uh, Transit. And he said, when he was a representative, every Friday, every Sunday night, he used to call yeah, and talked about the upcoming issues with the House of Representatives and, and the State House. And she was a remarkable woman and, and a good friend for him too.
Jim, did you? Yes, Jim?
Yeah, I just want to mention, you know, I spent uh, twenty-five years or so working in Boston and I served on uh, a, a, a board called Waste Cap that really was a big recycling board. We got all the money from the uh, bottle bill and we created all these kind of recycling programs. And I got to go around and give presentations on recycling. And many, many times, all over the state, I'd be giving a presentation in Virginia to be sitting in the front row. Somebody from Falmouth there, everywhere I went, she was omnipresent on that issue. Unbelievable.
Thank you all for your tributes to Virginia, a very special person. Do you want to take a chance on Tom updating us on the assistant planner, or he might freeze up again? He's saying, no, 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 no.
Next meeting. He's shaking his head. No, let's move on.
Yeah, thumbs up. Okay. So that's all that's left there is uh, that our next meeting is expected to be live and in person. So that will be in the selectman's meeting room on June twenty-second. You know, same time, six thirty. Paul?
Can we wear pajamas to the in-person meeting?
You could, but
Think long and hard about that.
So.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned. It is seven sixteen.